The planning department doesn't regulate content on the signs.
That's right. Not allowed to.
Like a good neighbor, Jake is there.
Okay, we are now live on Facebook. Okay, we're live on all our channels, ready when you guys are.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and I'd like to call the city council, the Galton City Council meeting, June 2nd of 2020. We sway it to the governor's leads for executive order number 16 and number 34, and the need to limit the community's spread of COVID-19. The June 2nd, 2020 Galton City Council meeting will be held by electronic means. The meeting will be live streamed to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the council and citizens of Galtons. If you wish to join, the address should be on the screen.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to Saul Fennell, second, but I believe it's Councilman Overton.
That's right.
All in favor, say aye. I'll call you that, do a roll call.
Got it. Vice Mayor Camp?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilman Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Ms. Kettrell. Would you call the roll now, please, for the meeting?
Alrighty, Vice Mayor Camp?
Present.
Councilman Alexander?
Present.
Councilman Fan?
Here.
Councilman Fennell?
Here.
Councilman Hayes?
Present.
Councilwoman Love?
Here.
And Councilman Overton?
Present.
Vice Mayor Camp, we have a call.
Thank you, Mayor. We have, Connie, we have no minutes provided to approve tonight, so we'll move on to public recognition on agenda-related items. Jeff, you want to take over?
Yes, sir. I'm gonna allow each person to talk. I'll say your name, and you will have to unmute your own microphone. We'll start with Jill Russell. You have anything you'd like to say? Okay, moving on to Michelle. Michelle, do you have anything you'd like to say? Okay, that's everyone.
Thank you, Jeff. We'll move on now to Mayor's comments. I have two things to bring up. I was asked to make everybody aware that the state of emergency has not been extended in the Galton of at all. And the other thing, I have a proclamation that I need to read. Galton proclamation by the mayor, whereas Tennessee dairy farmers and the dairy industry has contributed to the development and well-being of Galton, Tennessee, since Galton City's earliest found formation by the General Assembly in 1802, and whereas the dairy industry is a major contributor to citizens all across the country, state, and nation, has a significant impact on the health, welfare, and economy of our nation, and whereas milk and milk products provide numerous physical, psychological, and nutritional benefits to the growth, energy, and overall wellness of our citizens. And whereas real milk and milk products are undisputedly superior to imitations in quality, taste, and value. Now therefore, I place Brown Mayor of the City of Galton, Tennessee, to hereby claim June 20th as dairy month, thereby highlighting the dairy industry, and asking that the citizens of Galton join and celebrate 83 years honoring dairy farmers and deserve the month with the appropriate programs and activities. This witness here and this here set to my hand called for this city seal, the seat of Galton on the 2nd day of June 2020. All right, doing that, we'll move on to the agenda. Item number one is another current ordinance, O2005-22, Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This is order city Galton, Sumner County, Tennessee, rezoning point 67 acre lot from R40, low-density residential district, MRO, multiple residential and office district with a preliminary master development plan for the Montgomery Office located south of Nashville Pike and east of Lake Shore Drive. Authorizing revisions to be indicated on official zoning atlas, repealing conflict divotages and providing for severability and providing for an effective date, and I so move.
Public hearing.
Oh, this is public hearing. I'm sorry, public hearing.
We declare public hearing. I want the public wishing to speak. Mr. Hartsford, can you bring him up?
Uh, we have our employees and then a Michelle. Michelle, if you wish to speak, you can unmute your microphone. And that's everyone.
Thank you, Jeff. We'll move on to item number two. I would declare a public hearing closed. Third reading of ordinance number O2005-17, Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This is order to provide revenue for the City of Galton, Tennessee, for municipal purpose for the 2020 tax year and the 2021 fiscal year. Third reading, I so move.
I'll second that.
I have a motion of Councilman Alexander, second of Councilman Fennell. Anyone wishing to speak? The rate on this is still 80 cents, right?
Right. Eight cents, yes.
Okay. All right. All right. Ms. Kettrell, you need to do a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Camp?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yeah.
Councilman Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Councilman Overton?
Yes.
It's a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Ms. Kettrell. We'll move on to the next item. This is the second reading of ordinance number O2005-20, Councilman Fan.
This is second reading on an ordinance appropriating $129,600 for a seat for the State of Tennessee for training supplements, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion for Councilman Fan and second by Councilman John Alexander. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Kettrell, do a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Camp?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilman Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, Ms. Kettrell. We'll move on to the next item. Second reading of ordinance number 02005-21, Councilman Fennell.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This ordinance waiving tap fees on behalf of Habitat for Humanity. Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Councilman Fennell and second by Councilman Loves are in discussion. Seeing none, Ms. Kettrell, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Camp?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yeah.
Councilman Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Councilman Overton?
Yeah.
A unanimous vote.
Thank you, Ms. Kettrell. We'll go on to the next item. This is first reading of ordinance number 025-2005-23, an ordinance appropriating $10,000 for the census rapid response grant, and I so move.
Second.
We have a second. I didn't catch you doing the second. Did you catch me?
Jimmy Overton.
Okay, Councilman Overton had a motion by Councilman Camp and a second by Councilman Overton. Are there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call, please, Ms. Kettrell?
Vice Mayor Camp?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yeah.
Councilman Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Councilman Overton?
Yes.
A unanimous vote.
Thank you, Ms. Kettrell. We'll move on to item number six. This is the first reading of ordinance number O2006-24, Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This is appropriating $15,510 for pool and city hall vehicles, and I so move.
We have a motion and a second, a motion by Councilman Alexander, and I still didn't catch the second again.
Oh, fan.
Councilman Fan, they're in discussion. Ms. Kettrell, you'll do a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Camp?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yeah.
Councilman Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
We have another unanimous vote.
Thank you, Ms. Kettrell. Motion carries. We'll move on to item number seven. This is the first reading of ordinance number O2006-25, Councilwoman Love.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City of Galton, Sumner County, Tennessee, to rezone 483.36 plus or minus acres from the R1A residential 1A district to the industrial restrictive district to rezone 40.78 plus or minus acres from the medium-density residential planned unit development district to the industrial restrictive district to rezone 116.22 plus or minus acres from R15 residential 15 planned residential development district to the industrial restrictive district and to rezone 6.25 plus or minus acres from the agricultural residential district to the industrial restrictive district, totaling 646.61 plus or minus acres located south of Roundtree Drive, west of Brights Lane, and north of Hartsfield Pike, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. I so move.
Second.
All right, thank you. We have a motion by Councilman Love and a fight Councilman Fan again.
Yes.
All right. They're in discussion. Seeing none, Ms. Kettrell, you do a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Camp?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yeah.
Councilman Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
A unanimous vote.
Thank you. We have approval. Moving on to the next item. This is a resolution R2006-28, Councilman Overton.
Resolution addressing military deployment of police officers in the police department, I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Overton, or Overton, a second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Kettrell, do you call roll, please?
Vice Mayor Camp?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yeah.
Councilman Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
And a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Ms. Kettrell. Your item passes. We'll move on to item number nine. This is a resolution accepting public approvals by the City of Galton from Tennessee Carrollton Phase 2B. Councilman Hayes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Hayes and a second by Councilman Overton. Is there any discussion? Ms. Kettrell, do a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Camp?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yeah.
Councilman Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Councilman Overton?
Yes.
A unanimous vote.
Thank you, Ms. Kettrell. That concludes the agenda. We're gonna move into other business now. I have two items on the other business. The mayor wanted brought up that the 4th of July, the event organizer does not feel that she has support for a festival this year with the COVID situation. I want to know if the council wishes to still do the fireworks show. Options would be done, would be to not do it or to do it in a later date. My thought is that we have the fireworks show, which would require some support from the city for parking and control, but I believe it is doable, but I will follow your guts. Just open for discussion.
I'd like to see us do it. I mean, we need to get back to reality and get back to doing things we need to do, and I think our citizens love our fireworks show, and I think we need to do it, but that's just my opinion.
Jimmy, are you saying, Jimmy, are you saying do it and have the city endorse it and have an event? Or are you talking about just shoot the fireworks and let everybody show up and watch them?
The lady, the lady doesn't want to have the event. That usually puts it on for us. She doesn't want to have the event. So I think we still need to have a fireworks show. We've already got the fireworks. We've already purchased fireworks. I think we need to have them, and I think we need to shoot them on July 4th, like we always do. People staying in their car and social distance and do what they need to do.
I'm, I agree with you, Councilman Overton.
So we're not, we're not gonna do the, like, the games and all that stuff and boots and everything like that, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And I think, I think we've already purchased the fireworks. What did you say, Jimmy?
That's correct. I, I think, I think we do that every year, and you know, we purchase them every year, but I, I just think that the lady that puts on the, the company that puts on the, the actual vendors and stuff for us just decides it's not the proper time to do it, and I'm okay with that, but I just think we need to have the fireworks.
I guess we need to say something about social distance.
Because I understand in one meeting that we're under contract to do it.
That's right.
That's patient last week, yeah.
We are. Now, we could put them off, but I just think we need to do it on the 4th of July. Yeah, we need to get back to doing what we need to do.
That's right. Do I police have to monitor that?
Well, they'll do traffic and stuff like we always do, John D.
Could we get it where someone could park in some of the grass area so that you can get more people in that park? Is there any place to do that?
Well, without the, without the boots and everything, you're probably gonna have a lot more parking and everything than you usually would, yeah.
Yep. You have two extra parking lots. You have two parking lots that you normally don't have.
Yeah.
See any other discussion? All right, I, I think this should be moved on to committee for next week before we make a decision, because I believe there's gonna be some money involved, and I don't know if we can do that tonight or not. Am I right? This is my calling?
Yeah, maybe it don't committee.
If there is money involved, although I thought we had already purchased the fireworks.
We have. There shouldn't be any money involved. That's really why I was asking about the police support. Most of it be city or in any way. I don't think, as far as I know, city will be out any money, because we've already purchased it.
All the thing we're doing is just not having the vendors.
Right.
Is the lady committed to, or whoever sets off the fireworks, are they obligated to us to put it on?
Yes, we're under contract.
Well, we're under contract with that, to that woman, all right, for the fireworks.
No, we're not under her.
But I, I mean, I got two emails that day on them. One, I mentioned it, there might be more money required, one of them didn't, so. I, I actually thought we'd probably just send it on to committee. That's probably the best thing to do and prove it after we discuss it.
Yeah, that's fine, and if there is money involved, we'd have to have an ordinance. I'm not aware of additional money, but if there is money, we would need an additional ordinance.
Everyone fine with sending it on to?
Yes.
Yes.
Goodbye, proclamation or acclamation.
Yeah.
He needs to say something about the fireworks. How did he do that?
What is?
Mr. Camp, I'd like to say something. This is Chuck Stewart, beneficial.
I can't, I can't hear who was talking.
It's Chuck Stewart, beneficial.
Okay.
I just want the council and you to be aware that we have sold more firework tents this 4th of July right now than we ever sold on the 4th of July.
Good. Money in our pocket.
So, that you know, we're probably gonna have, they're thinking the same thing, that people are gonna do fireworks on 4th of July, so we, more applications.
They didn't, they didn't mind paying fees, did they, Chuck?
No, they didn't. They, normally, New Year's is when we get the most applications for fireworks tents, but this July, we're getting quite a few.
Good.
A lot of people staying home.
Yeah, they are.
Okay. All right, so we'll move that on to the committee meeting next week. The other thing she wanted to bring up tonight is Thursday, Thursday on Main, the greater Galton wants to know if they can continue their plans for the first one of the season on June 18th. I think it can be done safely and will be a good for downtown, but I will support anything you think.
I'm okay with it.
Question. Aren't we supposed to limit the number of people in gatherings to 50? Although right now on the square, I see a video, and it's a whole lot more than that.
Good question.
The question for you, Ms. McCully.
Under the governor's current executive order, they are supposed to be limited to 50, but as he explained in that order, you can have 50 in one location and 50 in another location, and 50 in another location. So although he does say a limit of 50 in Sumner County at least, there, and the other counties that that order controls in, you can have multiple gatherings of 50.
There's no way we can require them to wear masks, is it?
No, sir, there's not. The governor has not required that, and we are under the governor's orders.
Okay.
So from what you just said, Susan, if we had it, we would block off different sections of the square for people, and that would work?
Yeah, I'm not really certain about the mechanics of that, and perhaps the mayor was going to speak with you tonight about that. I haven't talked with her about that, but I'm certain that she must have something in mind for that. I just don't know what that is.
I think we need to allow them to do it if they feel like they can do it and abide by the governor's, what the governor's asking. I think we need to allow them to do it, but like I said, I, I just think that we need to be careful, but we need to get on about our business.
I, I agree with you. This was kind of time sensitive because of the 18th, and the mayor says she has a plan. I just take her at her word.
If she has a plan, I think we need to move on with it.
I mean, yeah, y'all need to, y'all need to let us know, because I mean, we're the major sponsor. We, we've put up $10,000 for this thing, so.
You're good with it, Craig?
Uh, kind of questionable. I didn't, I didn't want to do Junes or Julies, so I'm doing August. And I'm, I'm not gonna set up a tent. I'm not gonna pass out things. I'm not gonna do that. I'm just gonna go.
Do you think that State Farm can set up different little areas then with 50 people each?
Well, how you do it?
I don't know how you do it either. I mean, I, I really don't. I mean, that's my, that's my whole point. So I mean, I don't think any of us are gonna set up tents or anything or pass out, you know, stuff like we used to. It's just gonna be, just go and show up, and you know, I don't know. So.
I think if the mayor's got a plan to do it, and they've, and they've discussed and got a plan to do it, I think we need to move forward with it, but I'm okay either way. I'm not.
Well, I mean, she should have, she should have told us her plan, because I don't know her plan, and, and you know, I'm sitting here getting texts from Donna below right now, letting me know what's gonna happen. So I mean.
Does Donna want to do it or not?
Yeah, I mean, I think she probably does, but I mean, yeah, I think it would be, I think it would. It, let's put it this way, it's gonna help the downtown area if we do it. You know, the restaurants and things like that. I think it's gonna help that.
I say let's do it.
But how are you gonna, how are you gonna keep the social distancing and everything like that? I mean, that's my.
That's what I'm concerned about. We've gone margin today.
Yeah. I mean, you can't, you know, you can't require them to wear masks or anything like that, so I mean, I mean.
Can we require them to wear a pool noodle around their neck on each side and six feet long?
I'm going to have to get my church all. I'll be right back.
Yeah.
So Craig, are you saying you want to do it or you don't want to do it in June?
No, I'm just, I'm kind of up in air. I mean, I, I, you know, that's why I didn't want to do June or July. I kind of wanted to wait and see everything win, so that's why Craig is sponsoring August, you know? I want to kind of.
I just hate to be.
Roll on through.
I just hate to do a city sanctioned event going against what the governor has told us to do, unless we can put some kind of, like, yellow tape up in different areas on the square and say only 50 people can be in this little area and 50 in this area.
Well, I don't think the mayor or Susan or anybody else would, would let us and encourage us to do this event if they thought we were gonna do it unsafe, so.
It's not us, it's the people that would be coming. If nobody's margining us.
And, and what's the plan? What is the plan? I mean, we need to know something, because the first one is coming up, June what?
June 18th is the date I got on this.
Third week, ain't it?
Yeah, June 18th, so. It's right around the corner. Why do we not know what the plan is? Why do we not know how they gonna set it up? What, what's gonna happen?
Well, I'm certain, I'm certain that the mayor was going to discuss that with you tonight,
and I don't think she was aware that she was gonna not be able to attend the meeting until late this afternoon, and we've been in a different meeting beginning at 4:30.
Well, I mean, we could have had a plan. Somebody could have brought the plan. Somebody could have said it.
I just.
We got, we're moving on, and next week's another week, and then we're gonna be another week closer to it.
I'd like to know the plan too, because I just hate for somebody to say, well, if the city can do that, then why, why should we let the governor?
That's what I'm concerned about.
That's, yeah, that's, that's the whole point.
Guys, I mean, Jimmy, I, I know what you're saying. Believe me, I want to open things back up, but I can tell you, I've got a lot of people in my business today, and, and what I can tell with the perception of the people out there, they're still scared to death of this.
Guys, I'm not fighting. If you want to shut it down, just shut it down.
But if somebody won't make a motion, I tell you, go and send it on to committee meeting next week.
Well, I just, I just wish we knew what the plan was gonna be and how they're gonna, how they're gonna make everybody social distance and how they're gonna spread it out.
Craig, we waited one week. Does that give State Farm enough time to, to cancel?
It's not, it, it's not us. I think it's the bands. I mean, I think, I don't know if Donna, I'm sitting here, she's texting me, but I don't know if she's already paid for like one of the bands or anything like that. She's probably listening. Um.
Can we talk about this next Tuesday again, or is it too late?
Yeah, we can.
You don't think we need to have a call meeting, do you?
Well, we might need to.
You know, guys, I don't know if you are, but my phone's kind of blowing up with things that are happening on the square.
Let's just put it on an agenda for next week and see where we're at.
I think, I think too, I think, you know, it's, it, if we can do it, we need to do it, because it's gonna help the square. It's gonna help the businesses on the square. It's gonna help the restaurants, you know, things like that, but we need to, we do need to have a plan, and I don't know what that plan is. Nobody's told me that.
Me either.
So yeah, I just want to move it to the committee meeting next week?
Yes.
We need to go, uh.
Hey, all right, hey, Donna just said that June can be canceled, so yes, I mean, it can be canceled. So if we move it to next week, I think we'll be okay.
Okay, let's do that.
Making a motion?
Do we need a?
Well, I don't think we need a motion, do we?
We just moved, I can see it, Karen, so.
Put it on the work session.
Yeah.
All right, we'll move on to the next item. Since the state of emergency has ended, GPU is now addressing the past due accounts. I have asked Councilman Hayes to share that information for the public's benefit. Councilman Hayes?
Um, Jeff Hansel.
Where's Jeff? Yes, sir.
Can I, I mean, can I share this on my screen or not?
You do have that ability.
I don't know.
If you hover over the bottom of your screen, you'll see share.
Like, there's like 12 items on here, and I hate to read every one of them, but.
This is inside the agenda? That you're sharing?
No, I don't think so. Yeah, all right, here we go. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. Plan for zooming customer past due notifications, applying penalties and service disconnections, June 2020. Number one, currently there are approximately 1,000 customers with accounts that are more than $25 past due. Number two, on June 1, 2020, a telephone call will be sent out to all customers with an account that is past due more than $25. Customers will be requested to contact our office to bring their account current or to set up arrangements to make payment on their account. Number three, on June 9, 2020, a call will be sent out to customers in cycle three that have an account that is past due more than $5 to notify them that their account is past due, that a late penalty will be applied to their account, and that the services is subject to disconnection. Number four, moving on to June 12, 2020, a call will be sent out to customers in cycles four and seven that have an account that is past due more than $5 to notify them that their account is past due, that a late penalty will be applied to their account, and that their service is subject to disconnection. Number five, on June 17, 2020, a call will be sent out to customers in cycle five that have an account that is past due more than $5 to notify them that their account is past due, that a late penalty will be applied to their account, and that their service is subject to disconnection. Number six. Number six, on June eighteenth, a call will be sent out to customers in cycle three that are still past due to notify them that their service is subject to disconnection on June twenty-second, twenty twenty. On June twenty-second, twenty twenty, service disconnection for non-payment or resume with customers in cycle three subject to service disconnection on this date. Number eight, on June twenty-second, a call will be sent out to customers in cycles four and seven that are still past due to notify them that their service is subject to disconnection on June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty. On June twenty-third, twenty twenty, a call will be sent out to customers in cycle one that have an account that is past due more than five dollars to notify them that their account is past due, that a late penalty will be applied to their account, and that their service is subject to disconnection. Number ten, on June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, service disconnection for non-payment will continue with customers in cycle four and seven subject to service disconnection on this date. Number eleven, on June twenty-fifth, a call will be sent out to customers in cycle five that are still past due to notify them that their service is subject to disconnection on June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty. On June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, a call will be sent out to our customers in cycle two and eighty-eight that have an account that is past due more than five dollars to notify them that their account is past due. A late penalty will be applied to their account and service is subject to disconnection. So there you have it.
Thank you, Councilman Hayes. Has anybody got any, what are you smiling for, Mr. Gregory? Everybody got any comments or anything?
Yeah, I've got one. Where he said five dollars, it's actually twenty-five dollars.
Hey, it's, all those said five, so, okay.
It said five on mine, too, so.
It's mostly twenty-five.
You're supposed to add it up five times.
It's twenty-five dollars. We wouldn't cut anybody off for five dollars.
Hey, David, let me ask you this. Do you think, do you think we ought to move that to July instead of June, or what?
I think they're getting, they're getting so big that we need to go ahead and start addressing.
I mean, I know that's like our company. We're, we're not cutting, I mean, we hadn't canceled anybody, and we're, we're not cutting them off till July. We're, we're extending till July, but.
Right.
And I, and I know we're, we're a lot bigger, but I'm just saying, would it be better to do that or not, or can we do that, or you think it's smart to do it in June?
Well, I think the quicker we do it, the better off it'd be for all of us, for the people that have to cut them off and everybody else if we had to. Uh, they just get, you know, a thousand of them right now.
Yeah.
You keep putting it off, it's gonna be more and more. I think we can probably work with most of them.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Are you gonna, I mean, you gonna be able to work with them if they come to you and say, look, I'm?
I think so, yeah.
I'm still out of work and I'm not gonna be back at work, you know, and.
Right. All, all they gotta do is give us a plan on, you know, they might not pay it all.
Yeah.
They could play some of it, and then say they're gonna pay so much a month for the next few months.
Okay.
But they need to get that done now. They need to get in touch with us before we can do that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Any more discussion? This is nothing we got to vote on either, is it, Susan?
No. No, you, there's no vote necessary for this.
Do you want to say something, Councilman Loves?
No, no.
All right, that concludes everything. She gave me for other business. Are there any other business for me, the department heads or council members?
No, sir.
Seeing nothing, if we go to public recognition on non-agenda related items. Jeff Herschel.
Um, let's see here. We just have one non-employee, Michelle. You'll have to unmute your mic. Do you have anything you'd like to say? Okay, that's it.
Oh, thank you, Jeff. Thank you. So that concludes the agenda, so we're, we're ready to adjourn.
Uh, Mayor Camp, I think you done a fine evening guiding us through that tonight.
Put my iPhone, my computer, and my iPad. I was staying plenty busy.
Hey, what, does he, is anybody looking out from down, what does it look like downtown?
I'm fixing to go down there. I like that hat, Councilman Hayes. What did it say up there, Russ? I'm sure you're not wearing a shirt to match it, are you?
Yeah.
Hey, Jim, let me, let me. Let me declare the media adjourned.
Okay.
Hi, y'all.
I'm on my way out to my church to get my church oil. I'll be back.
Y'all be careful. It's really crowded on the square.
Is it really?
Yeah.
Very crowded.